One through three. Specifically, over the past month, the city clerk have reached out to you to clarify any questions or answer anything that you may have concerns regarding ordinances one through three. And specifically, I want to highlight number three, which is a policy and procedure ordinance. It is just to provide a roadmap for the invoicing operation, a written form. The purpose of the ordinance is to set clear expectations in written form, create consistency, reduce risk by open communication, and improve employee performance. Now, no one can't follow written rules, policies, if they don't know them. So therefore, it is of good government that we write policies. Policies are set as guidelines and procedures for us to operate, step one, two, three, and four. So I ask for your yes vote on each, and I take this moment and ask you if you have any questions to clarify either one of the three before you on this evening.
I just have one question. The only question I have is on the third ordinance, number three. So the deadline for invoice Tuesday at four o'clock, has that been what it's been?
That's, uh-huh, it hasn't changed.
Okay, alright. And the only other one was the check pickup, check pickup after one o'clock on Friday. That's, that's basically the same?
That is the same. Since we implemented that from my inception in January of 2021, we had some occasions where the song was requesting it just again to be out of control. And so, we made that change in implementation somewhere around February 2021.
Okay.
It may have been later than that, but somewhere in the neighborhood. But yes, it's been operating like that for the past three to four, well, almost four years now.
Okay. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you. This ordinance just reduces to written form.
So it's basically the same. My question would be, you know, there are those times when you do have emergencies, you still take our solace if you have those concerns.
That's what it said. If there's a certain, you know, criteria that's out way beyond, just as the one we discussed earlier, exceptions are made, but they have to be authentic exceptions, not just, you know, because we want to do.
You say authentic exception. Can you explain that?
Yeah, I can provide you with an example that I received that is a non-exemption. We had an invoice to come in and it was like 25 days out before payment. And at 4:30 PM, a department called and asked that it could be done the very next day. So it did not have an authentic exception for doing it the next day for payment of that week when you failed to put it in properly at the set time that it should have been implemented. Does that answer your question?
My question is, why did this have to go in the form of an ordinance?
Uh, ordinance are permanent in nature. And I am not the city attorney. I do not set the ordinances or the legislation in its form that is derived from the city attorney's office. But an ordinance is-
So this was recommended to you?
What do you mean recommended?
You said you did not set it, so this was recommended to you by the city attorney?
The city attorney is the office that draws up legislation. I provide them with what the language should be and they set it to what form it should be in.
But I'm, I'm at, this was recommended?
I just stated to you, I set the language and provide the knowledge of what should be done. And the city attorney office is the one that sets the form, whether it's in ordinance form or resolution. And again, an ordinance is a permanent in nature. So it's set with rules and regulations.
City clerk, that's me. Yeah, so this is designed to get your office to have a better movement in city government?
It's not just the city clerk's office. It's all departments of the city of Pineblood. It is an open forum of communication for us all to operate properly. It's good government to have policies and procedures in place. If we do not have policies and procedures in place, we can just go away.
Excuse me for interrupting you, correct, Roberts, but Councilmember Ned Frazier is trying to come on. Do you have, she doesn't have a link?
She needs the link, it's the same link, but I can provide the link. It's the same link, it has not changed. It's the standard link. But I can provide it to her soon if I get back. Any more questions? If not, I ask you for your yes vote on ordinances one, two, and three.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Finley. Mr. Finley is speaking to Agenda Item Number 10. Speaking against Agenda Item Number 10.
Yes, my name is John Finley. And I took a look at this, this, uh, what you're about to do, and it just doesn't, yeah, it doesn't seem right. Seven Bank and Ryan Watley and the Crummins over there, they spent $6 million in taxpayer funds on their head project across the street from the big bank. And they want perpetual naming rights, and they want to exclude any other financial institutions. And if we stop funding this thing, they want to be able to take it, take possession of it. Uh, it's pretty ridiculous. It's pretty ridiculous in my mind that, that they're, they're forcing this project to continue with taxpayer funds. Otherwise, they're just going to be able to take it back into their possession. That seems to be what, what this legislation is all about, just because they, they donated a piece of property. In my mind, donation is a donation, but not a quid pro quo or a means to exert perpetual control over a piece of property in the way that they are about to do with this piece of property. And any pieces of property that are connected to it, and any departments that are connected to it? Perpetuity? Forever? No, no. If I'm elected mayor, I'm going to cancel this whole project, let it fail, because in my opinion, it's an $8 million hole in the ground. It's an $8 million boondoggle, an $8 million monument to corruption that I don't think needed to happen. And letting them name it and keep an ATM there? Because they're tearing down our banks anyway and they just put in an ATM, they would have done that anyway. They would have done that anyway. So now, we're, we're going to give them perpetual naming rights over the whole thing. And, uh, and if we don't keep it going, they'll take possession of it. That seems to be what, what this legislation is about. I think it's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Our next speaker, against item 10 as well, Mr. Julius Finley.
I realize it's not very long, so I'm just doing this like anything. The property on the corner, which was peacefully apart, was owned by Mayor Doug King. UAPB put a building there called an incubator to take people who wanted the business, sort of the generator business. They were ahead of the generation in light years. And it was to help them, provide all the staff they need. All you do is rent the space, you'll have everything you need. You have conference room, TVs, everything you need, secretaries, answering phone, to grow your business. It was, it fought it for a while. They wanted to put a restaurant downstairs, but they kept it over five years and never found a suitable restaurant to go in. And Jimmy Cunningham was asked to make it a museum. That property was donated, they wouldn't, he wouldn't sell it to UAPB. So UAPB's ventures never had anything but eight or nine parking spaces. And they had 10 or 15 employees. So it was not doable. He refused to sell it, but he donated it to the city. And what I understand about donating property, you always have to take the intent of the donor. And the intent of Doug King is for the city to use it for the public's use. So whenever you go into any partnership with anyone and you give them the right to name it, you give them the right to do business on it, and along with what Mr. Finley just said, it says, take it, take it back. In other words, the city, if the city does not run it, we can take it back and the whole thing goes along with them. So I would suggest to you that all over the country for the last 20 years, naming rights have been very valuable. Cities like you all have sit and discussed how to raise money for the city. And in many cases, they asked banks and corporations to pay for naming rights. So to give something away is called an intangible asset. It's an asset, but it's not something that you can touch. It's an intangible asset and it has tremendous value. Uh, in some places, they pay over $20 million to name certain buildings. Go ahead, and I, I just say that I looked over, well, it's, it's so much I could say, but like in, they, they even talking about allowing the state house to be named for someone that wants to give $10 million, $20 million or something. So I suggest to you that if go forward, have spent the money that was allocated for that project, and now they want to somehow pretend to give money for that project, I think at least it should not go through as a revolution. It's, the contract cannot be modified without seeing the first contract. So I say simply real quick this. What does the first contract say? The, the people never ever heard what the first contract said. This first I've ever heard when I read about ATM machines. And they can put any signage on any building on any side of any building. So it sounds like to me, it seems like to me that we must be more informed than we are to give away a tangible, an intangible asset that can be worth lots of money and if you say it's perpetual. And I'll tell you this real quickly, and I say, there was a land in the country, my cousin said, energy wants to put a power plant about it. He was younger than me. And he said, they want to use it forever. Not five years, not 10 years. So when you want to use something to grow somebody else forever, you shouldn't give it away. I'm against it. I say at least, I say one more thing. The law says, I say this real quick. I'm going to show you where you've already broken the law. Please listen, let me show you how you broke the law. This is not in regards to that general, similar to this. It say, a building, structure, or facility paid for in whole or in part of public funds shall not be named for an individual living at the time of completion of the building, structure, or facility, who in the 10 years preceding the construction of the public building, structure, or facility was elated by qualified electors to federal, state, county, or municipal office. So when you're named the aquatic center after Colorado, it was illegal. And I have Arkansas code, I get to show you, it's 25.1. That's 121. And I'm asking you to slow down some because you're about to make a terrible mistake without giving the people an opportunity to address it in a full form. Thank you.
That ends our public speakers for this evening. At this time, we want to call our meeting to order. And we're going, going to open with our invocation by Pastor William Shaw, Pastor of Pessant View and Industry. See here in line. Pastor Shaw. Pastor Lockit, can you come up and lead us in our invocation? We'd like everybody to please stand for the invocation and relax in what the text reads.
Let us all bow our grace to God, our Father. First of all, we want to say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to come together. We ask now that you would control our minds and our hearts that is what's best for the city of Pineblood. In Jesus' name, amen.
I declare the name of Jesus to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Pastor Lockit.
You need to join your prayer, that's the way you pray.
Introduce a copy of the reading, so I'm sorry. At this time, let's, uh, have a roll call. Councilmember Mayes.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Brown Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Lockit.
Here.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Here.
Councilmember Shager.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Brunson. Okay, Frazier is here, so we have six with Frazier. Frazier's on Zoom. Shager and Brunson are not here. Okay, introduce a copy of the April 15th minutes. It's been probably included in second, that the April 15th minutes be approved as presented. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by SNI. Any opposed, then it stands approved. Moving into our committee reports, our first report will come from Councilmember Mayes, with Councilmember Brown Jr. substituting Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. Uh, tonight, we have three budget adjustments for consideration. Uh, the first budget adjustment, uh, the total is $188,500. Uh, this is for the Opportunity House. It's for construction, HVAC replacement, and ground maintenance. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
Mr. Moving properly second, that a budget adjustment for $188,500 from the general fund going toward the Opportunity House construction completion projects for our primary HVAC and ground maintenance in the amount of $188,500 be approved. The floor is open for a discussion. I will say this, uh, this is, uh, this amount might be less than the $188,500. But we want to make sure that we moved over enough to finish up the work that's underway for this phase of Opportunity House construction. So this should cover everything that we're doing at this point, including some of the windows, all those things that we're doing in phase one. So, uh, but the main things are those items that you see listing on that page two, that detail the estimated cost of HVAC. And then you'll see page three for grounds maintenance. And that grounds maintenance is what it represents here.
So, so that's what the third page is coming in here?
Yes, sir.
That's what, for the ground maintenance?
Any other questions? And you'll see at the top, uh, there is a contingency. Fifteen, seven, eighty-six, that's if we find that there is any other needs that should be enough, hopefully to come back. If there are no questions, let's vote. All in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by SNI.
Aye.
Any opposed, budget adjustment approved.
Second budget adjustment is coming from the fire department. Total budget adjustment is $100,000. This is coming from the Act 833 Revenue Fund and is going to be the Act 833 expense account. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
Second.
Okay, so moving properly second, that we approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $100,000 coming from the fire department, coming from the Act 833 expense move to the revenue line. All in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by SNI. That was pretty quick, because it's just moving it to that line. I didn't do that quite right, but well, I don't think there's any contention about that one. Okay, budget adjustment, stand approved, run by the department.
Third and final budget adjustment, uh, is coming from the, uh, actually, the reasons for the King Titan basketball tournament. Total budget adjustment is $50,000. It's coming from downtown district projects and is going to convention center operations. And that budget adjustment is coming from the 2017 sales tax fund. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
Second.
Mr. Moving properly second, that a budget adjustment in the amount of $50,000 coming from the 2017 sales tax going toward the production of the King Titan basketball tournament be approved. The floor is open for a discussion.
So with this, it's always going to take this to $50,000?
No, no, it takes more than the $50,000, but this is an additional $50,000 go toward the money that's, uh, you'll have sponsorships, you'll have admissions and concessions. And so with the $50,000, it should be enough to, hopefully, allow us to continue with the King Titan basketball classic while the winter allows.
And then also, uh, the size of the tournament is decreased. So instead of having around 16 teams, you're going to 18. So that will decrease the amount of expense that we're adding.
Bring in more local teams, that also cuts down on the expenses as well. And we know those A-teams will work, because I believe that's what we did back, the first year we did. We had 16, like this year and the year before. The first year of King Titan, we had 18.
So it's going to be enough?
We hope. We hope that it will be enough. Any other questions? Here and gone, all in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by SNI.
Aye.
Any opposed, budget adjustment approved.
Uh, also, during Ways and Means meeting, we discussed a position for the GBI against a person that will be doing data and analyzing, keeping up with crime stats. The position was approved through the administration committee. And so we should be seeing that in our next council meeting.
Is that in this one?
No. Uh, then also, uh, we have a contract pertaining to GBI, pertaining to consulting. That total is $125,000. And, uh, the mayor will get with the finance director to find the source of those funds. So we should be seeing that in our next, uh, council meeting. And that includes Ways and Means.
So one is in the approximate number forty-two, remember my? Thank you, Councilmember. For the Ways and Means Committee report. Ordinance is a resolution. Councilmember Mayes substituting Councilwoman Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four ordinance, ordinances. Excuse me, five ordinances. Number one, two, three, and four. They're being completed on tonight. Number five is up for first review. Number six through 10 are all resolutions. They will be completed on tonight. And all of you should have a resolution in front of you, which will be number 11. We have to go to the added to the agenda is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Pineblood, Arkansas to utilize federal and federal aid transportation alternative program funds downtown Pineblood delta with values, district pedestrian connecting phase two. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Moving properly second, that a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Pineblood, Arkansas, to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program funds be added to the agenda. Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Mayes. Councilmember Holcomb Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockit.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shager. Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Okay, six. So it's decided it's added to the agenda.
Yes, exactly. It consists of full oversight. It's unanimous here.
And so this is Agenda Item Number 11. And that includes ordinance and resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. Our next report will come from Councilmember Brown Senior, Economic and Community Officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I, I don't have an official report, but I already need some, some community news. And that news is, you know, the statement goes that romance without finance is zero. So I likenize with that with finance, businesses without finance is mostly zero. And I'm saying that to say that when your lending institutions or your banks, financial vendors lose a communication with you or lose the fact that they want to leave you or they don't know money to, I'm going to say it like, minority businesses or what have you, then your town tends to dry up in most cases. Very rarely that it will not dry up when your financial institutions not own the money. And I'm going to say it like this. I attended some years back, a program, a janitorial office was in that program also, it's called Fast Track Business Course. And we had a speaker, a banker come from Mississippi to talk to us during that time. And this statement I want to leave with you, he said, "I would rather loan you $500,000 and that I know of, that's a half a million, than to loan you $50,000." He said, "Because if I loan you $50,000, you probably going to be out of business in the next two years. But if I loan you $500,000, you got a chance to pick yourself up. You know, you're going to lose a little bit and pick yourself up and you'll be able to survive in a strong business." So that's a statement I want to leave you with. You know, I'll forever tell you that I've always been in a personal Pineblood, that you know, I kind of make the growth. I want the business to, uh, to spread out and be wide, because we have nine companies plus that Pineblood has to, has to or could have support. If we have proper things in our city, then we would be a striving city. So, you know, whether I'm sitting in this seat or not, those are my, my goals for Pineblood. I just hope that someone online, somebody who's out can see that and help Pineblood to move forward. Take away, I'm sorry, I said the wrong word. Take away the thought of Pineblood is a dying city. Pineblood is a crime city. That's, that's make Pineblood a redupped city. That's where all the things are taken to, to make. The citizens want to live today and other businesses want to invest. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Love to help in wealth there, Councilmember Frazier.
Hello, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, this is, this is Councilmember Frazier and I'm here with the John Scarborough, he just took a pile of crap.
We're coming for your report.
We are here in New York City right now. Uh, we're touring for the anti-bullying campaign and I am so excited to be with our students and they are so excited to be on this tour. And so we are in New York City at Times Square right now. We will be heading back to Washington DC so that we can go to the White House and also to the Nutsville Daisy Bay statue. So we're so excited. I said, "Are we excited, students, there?" But I just, that's my report for today. I just wanted to, uh, get on here and let you all know that we're still working hard for our youth. And I appreciate everyone that's moved us on and is supporting us in this anti-bullying campaign. And I definitely want to thank the John Scarborough for allowing us and our students to be able to go on this tour. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, she's going, lovely. I'm feeling on the Daisy Bay statue in Washington DC. So, uh, we heard from Councilmember Lynette Frazier, all the way from?
New York.
New York City. Thank you, Councilmember Frazier.
All the way from New- All the way from New York City right now, in the middle of Times Square, and then I'll, I'll, uh, shoot some live videos from, uh, our unveiling, and also, uh, the White House tour that we're going to do. So keep an eye out on our Facebook page, Lynette R. Frazier, also Board Three page, so that you can keep abreast of what we're doing and the tour we have.
Okay, how many are tra-? How many are traveling with you, I know you're with your, mine is the King, um, Commission? How many are traveling with you?
Yes, I'm with the Arkansas Martin King Commission, and, um, I know that the clerk is, he's, I'm living in the middle of Times Square, and he's on Tuesday, hey y'all? And we're so excited, so yes, we're, we're in the middle of, and he's from the Congress here with us, documenting everything that we're doing for Pine Brook.
Byron, she is in COVID, I feel, and she's really there, she's not there, but, we actually see her. Very good, thank you so much, thank you. Let's give a round of applause to Councilmember Frazier. Washington DC, they're touring New York City along the way, they have a group of Pine Brook High School students with them, and I think that's really amazing, a wonderful experience for everybody. Our next report will come from Shanger, I don't think he's on, he couldn't be with us this evening. Uh, we're moving on to Development and Planning, Councilmember Lockett.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, the Development and Planning meeting, uh, met on May the first at ten o'clock by Zoom only, and we referred, uh, item number five and tens to the council with a due pass. And we will meet tomorrow at one o'clock in these very chambers to, uh, conduct our, our monthly Development and Planning meeting. Thank you for moving my report, Madam Mayor.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Lockett. Traffic and Aviation, Councilmember Brunson, I don't think she's on soon, so moving on to Administration, Councilmember Hope Junior.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee made Tuesday, April the twenty-second, the due pass on Agenda Items Four, and Agenda Item Number Nine, and a due pass on the Crime Analysis Job Description. And also, I want to give a report, excuse me if you see me reading from my phone, this is why I kept my notes in. On Tuesday, April the thirtieth, the Planning Commission voted to allow Trinity Episcopal Church to open a twenty-four hour treatment center, which is known as Back to Life Treatment Center. I sent, I sent this to the council last week. That is the only notification that was sent to the public, which is located at seven oh eight West Second Street. There was no ma- no message, nothing sent to the, sent in the mail, there was nothing put in the newspaper, there was nothing put on, uh, emails, Facebook, TikTok, uh, whatever. Social media. The Planning Commission told me that that was the vice. And I disagreed with them, and they voted to allow Back to Life Treatment Company, Back to Life Treatment Center, to open up a opium rehab, rehab center that will house up to ninety-six people at Trinity Episcopal Church with the.
Is it the church?
It's the, with the church, with the, with the school, it's still the church. Well, they say they will have two full-time security dogs. But my, my point is, no one in that neighborhood that I live in, no one in that neighborhood that I live in, in that area, was given proper notice, proper notification, nothing in the mail, nothing on social media, nothing in the newspaper. I have nothing against helping people who have problems with drugs, but when you house almost a hundred people in a residential area, that's a problem.
Where's this church?
This church is on seven oh eight West Second Street. If I had not been to that Planning Commission meeting, I would not have known about it. Now, I have notified some of the residents that live in that community, some of them are here tonight, if you don't mind just raising your hand and standing up. Stand. And we, we, I am gonna start a petition, and we are going to fight this. And after we're fighting, people getting help, but you just don't put something in a neighborhood, and don't notify people of something of this nature. It's wrong. Because the people who, who came to that meeting, and stood, stood for that, to be put in that neighborhood, don't live in that neighborhood, and probably don't even live in this city. And that concludes my report.
Um, Hope, may I say something?
Say all you want to.
I support you, I want to say, let me know.
So, Councilmember, you said that the signage out front was, so far I noticed that if it, if it needed, you needed to.
Are you sure that was nothing in the newspaper, because?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you talk to the seal?
The seal was here, everybody on the Planning Commission was here.
He confirmed that they didn't post it.
They confirmed that, what, what I sent you off, there is a little sign in front of that school, which is Trinity Episcopal, uh, part of Trinity Episcopal School, Church. I took a picture of it, sent it to every councilman, that is the only notification. I was asked, "Did you see the sign?" And they, I was told, "That is the vice." There was nothing sent in the mail, there was nothing sent on social media, there was nothing posted in the newspaper. And that is a shame for somebody sitting on that Planning Commission to tell me that's all you sent out. And you housing up ninety-six is off, is just, just like a hundred.
As a city council, then what do we do?
As a citizen, I'm gonna get a petition.
Look at the rules.
And get.
Planning Commission has been called in private long time, so it's the rules, it's allowed, but they get it's allowable, evidently. They don't have to do it, you always.
So this would happen with the Planning Commission, you're going to, be your petition in the neighborhood?
Correct.
And get that.
And, and, and I have, I have, by five people, I have more than just here next, next councilor here.
It took a forty thousand dollar building, the man took it to Star City. And I ain't seen it since, that's why.
We, we gonna, I'm gonna have a petition, and I'm gonna build it. But for, for the record, don't, don't get me wrong, everybody deserves help, but you just don't shove nothing in somebody's face.
I beg y'all. And I need my building back.
So, here, Phil, we go through the Planning Commission, you're here for information.
I'm here for information.
She was on this, but now he see I feel. And he sit around and don't do anything, no people come to you five or six times.
Mr. Licker, be quiet, 'cause I'm talking right now, we listen to you every people. I'm talking right now.
You ain't telling nothing about it.
You being, you being disrespectful, I'm gonna have to check this, 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 this.
I apologize.
You need to be quiet, every meeting you come here acting fool.
I, don't say acting fool, that's a, that's a derogatory term.
No, he need to be quiet, 'cause I'm sick of him.
You, you be sick of me, I should do.
Mr. Licker.
I'm true.
Mr. Licker.
I'm, I'm quiet.
But he act a fool every time you come here.
I took a building, man, you, that supposed to do, kill you.
Just.
I'm sorry, but it's hard to take a man, take a forty thousand dollar building yours, and sell it to somebody, and they using it, and police officers looking at it like I want it?
Mr. Licker.
Yes, ma'am. I talked to you on Saturday, you do nothing about it, now you see I feel.
Mr. Licker, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, Mayor, if I had not called those who live in that neighborhood, would you have known about it?
No.
No.
And I've been living there since eighty-seven, nobody knew this was gonna be. It's in their backyard, pretty much.
If I had not been at that Planning Commission, I wouldn't have known about it.
So we're going to go through that, be our process, and we do, this is basically for the council's information on this, at this time.
And, 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 let me say this, Mayor, this is right, and we got through the little sign out there the wrong way, where you can't see the sign. I know, but that's what they do, they've been doing that.
Let, let me say this too, Mayor. I was told, if, look at that sign, I got out of my vehicle. To read the sign, you basically have to be walking on the sidewalk.
To see.
To see the sign. I had to get out of my truck to take a picture of the sign, so you all to see this, to get the picture of the sign. Now, that's a shame, to pull a sign that small to say there's gonna be a hearing on April the third. That's all they did before they took our machine going.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Hope, and thanks for bringing that information to our attention, and we will address that.
Thank you all of us.
Our next report will come from, say.
I want to say this, and I want to. Once, once we, once the city council has started that meeting, the public cannot speak unless we act in speech. And that need to be known to the public, you cannot, you out of order, if you speak, when, say.
Back for the Trinity House Second Budget Adjustment Department for the Act eight thirty-three funds, and our, um, third and final budget adjustment, um, this total budget adjustment is fifty thousand dollars, coming from the twenty seventeen Sales Tax Fund, this is to fund the, uh, King Titan Basketball Tournament. I move we send this budget, whether it's to the council.
Second.
All right, we have motion to second, send this budget adjustment to the full council with a due pass. Do we have any other business for Ways and Means? Yes, sir.
Hold it, now, we had talked on last, um, last, uh, Councilmember, about a few things that were requested by the GDI, I just wanted to get an update that had, uh, uh, had the mayor and finance director had a chance to look at that, uh, they had two requests, one was the position for the crime analyst, and the other one was the consultant, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the consultant agreement for the second year.
Did we, uh, yeah, we talked about that position, but we didn't finalize anything, but we can talk about that now, through Ways and Means, then we can move forward.
That is correct.
I, I believe the amount that, uh, we said.
And police officers. We didn't want the incoming non-uniformed person to be more than incoming, uh, uniformed person, so they
I mean, what we call that.
They made the, uh, position, uh, equal to an incoming of Trojan, uh, so there was about forty-one plus, you know, fringes. So, I guess one could just convert an unused, uh, uh, Trojan slot to such.
We know that, uh, in our last session, we helped to do that, and so, uh, you and I get together and, uh, find money.
Now, and I was.
Position, but did we get a description?
Yes, we approved this, this prescription, uh, through administration, we've already approved the job description on, uh, on last month, it went through job, it went through administration on the twenty-second. So, so we approved the position and the job description and the salary and all, it's, it's age I had. And it's been through administration.
As far as the, uh, the contract, uh, I guess my own, I guess, I won't say this is the only question we can give, but, since we have those slots and it's pushed apart into a long-term expense, we'll use unused salaries to cover that contract.
Well, see, that's a conversation we'll have to have with Police Chief, you know, because I don't know what other plan she has, so, we'll get together and, uh, determine where that will come from. The main thing is you all are approving, that we move forward.
Yes.
With both of those initiatives, and we'll pull it from the chess area, that we feel. I can't say that we'll pull it from police right now, I'd have to have a conversation with Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
As ready, um, let me move into discussion, I have a new.
Okay. All right, do we have any other?
You know, I get some special projects if I have to.
Okay.
Any other discussion for Ways and Means?
Uh, no discussions, check.
Okay, now, we have motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Ways and Means is adjourned.
Ordinance and resolutions, we have one, two, three, four, five ordinance, number one, two, three, and four. They'll be completed on tonight. Number five, Councilman Lockett. We're trying, we're trying to see if there's an urgency in.
You can read it two more times, we need, uh.
Number five, number five is up for first reading. Number six through ten are all resolutions, they can be completed for tonight. And all of you should have a resolution that would have to be voted to be added to the agenda. If it's added to the agenda, it would be number eleven. It is a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Pine Brook, Arkansas, to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program funds, downtown, downtown Pine Brook Delta Rhythm and Values Pedestrian Connecting Phase. So if this resolution is added to the agenda, it would be Agenda Item Number Nine.
So, we have to say this, um, Councilman Lockett, you are sponsoring?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sponsoring, it's a tap grant for the, is a Delta Rhythm and Values District, it's an aid twenty, uh.
So it's applying for this?
Right, we, we applied for it last year.
City have to pay the twenty percent, uh, grants paying eighty percent.
And we can get the twenty percent from the two million that we've already allocated to the Delta Rhythm and Values Initiative. So it wouldn't be in a new, uh, funding, and, uh, and it's, and it's gonna be in the Delta Rhythm and Values area, so we can match it with acquisition funding, or any, any kind of funding that we're using from that pot to improve that downtown area. So, so, that's, uh, the only reason that we can, if, 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 uh, the grant is due on the thirty-first, um, the economic community development people just wanted to get it done, so they wouldn't be pressed for time, that if we put it on their next agenda for the twenty years, they'll be a little up against the wall, uh, trying to get it in the package, whereas we, if we pass it tonight, they have a little more cushion. But I don't find anything controversial about it, because the money that we would match it is already within that, uh, two million that we allocated for Delta Rhythm, Delta Rhythm and Values improvements in that area.
On the thirty-first, envision on?
Yes, yes, it is.
Any question regarding ordinance and resolutions? Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So move.
Reporting stopped.
All in favor, that it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
In your thoughts? Give your thoughts, or disapprove.
Agenda number two, ordinance amendment section two dash five seven of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas. Respecting public comments and related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amendment section two dash fifty-seven of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas, respecting public comment and related purposes.
adopted.
Say.
This is probably moved in second, that ordinance amendment section five dash fifty-seven of the Code of Ordinance is for the City of Ponderup, Arkansas. Respecting public comments and related purposes be approved, the floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Fencham.
Um, in section one, um, part B, I would like to move that, uh, so I'll move to remove section one, um, part B from this ordinance. Um, that's a motion.
So this is in subsection, Councilman Devison, we have changed readers of the bear and city clerk. We are sure that most of the comments carries and the first one. I think it is obscuring the use of the city clerk, which is responsible for the time that we each people, and it wants to speak, and use our time as it's required. Some of that is already done right now. Okay, so, you're looking at the duties of the mayor and the city clerk.
Let me have you do this, the change, the change to that, the only change to this, is that it had the mayor doing the timekeeping, and then was corrected to change that the city clerk was doing the time, timekeeping.
We understand that, that's what we're doing.
Right, but in the original ordinance, it's not saying that.
So you're directing it promptly. We make a correction, but we actually do. Other than that, it seems to be the same.
Okay, then as far as the, so we inform the speaker, when his or her time has expired.
Mr. Clerk.
Say that because the clerk.
My, that's what it says here, that's, is that practically what we do?
So that's what we do. And, uh, originally, it didn't say that, it had the mayor doing the timekeeping and, uh, uh, those cases and time.
So, hope you're in agreement with this.
What, what? My motion was to strike B from section one.
I'm gonna give you a second just for, uh, just for sense of explanation, but I think what they've said, I said, okay. So, I think what Ms. Walens has just said, and that is basically, it's the same, it's just clarified that, uh, it is the duties of the mayor and is it, not saying that, uh, the clerk was overstepping, she's the one that actually keeps the time, the time, excuse me. Yeah, she's the one that actually keeps the time, so she will buzz in, and at that point, if they don't hear the buzz, the mayor say, your time is up. And that's, that's, I think that's basically what we're saying here, is just, is just put it in lawful form, that's what I said.
The only change, if that's stated, was it originally, in the original ordinance, it has the mayor as the timekeeper.
Right.
The only change and correction is made is that the clerk is the timekeeper, not the mayor.
But also, I guess the person that would tell, speak that their time is up.
The clerk is to notify them if they don't, then the mayor is to. The clerk is to notify them that their time is up, and that's normally done by the buzzer. And then following that, if they continue on, Mr. Leader, if they continue on, the mayor will make a statement as to conclusion.
I would like to.
Not, not, no, sir.
I'm not even gonna ask, you're out of order, sir. I'm sorry. Ask, you're out of order, I just asked.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'll be brown.
I guess, I guess the part I was looking at was, typically, the mayor is the person informs the person, even after the buzzer goes off and clerk is keeping the time, that the mayor took to the person that tells that person that their time is up, and that's what, this was saying.
Well, there should be a word or something in there that you can change, is there, is there conjunction or something, or what? The city clerk shall respond for keeping time and a lot of e-speaker and employment, okay, you wanna take out employment? You wanna take out employment, that, that be the mayor that does that?
I don't have an issue with it, if, if no one else has an issue with it, I'll just leave.
I'm just asking.
It's basically a statement.
Okay, all right, so I will withdraw my motion.
My second is withdrawn, drawn minds. All right, clear, send me, I'll see the other questions. This is moved in second, that we go on, about the ordinance we asked for, see, that's all, all those are favored, and you know what I said now?
Aye.
Hear your thoughts, ordinance approved.
Agenda number three, ordinance of the guidelines for submission and processing of invoices to the city clerk's office and for related purposes up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance of the guidelines for submission and processing of invoices to the city clerk's office and for related purposes be approved.
adopted, second.
This is probably moved in second, that an ordinance of the guidelines for submission and processes, processing of invoices to the city clerk's office and for related purposes be approved. The floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing not, are we in favor of this ordinance that it be known by C N I?
Aye.
Hear your thoughts.
No.
Can we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockum Junior.
Move.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanner. Councilmember Fraser, Councilmember Brunson. And Fraser, not Fraser. Or three.
Not four. But they, that's, uh.
The mayor can cast a vote on that.
This is four, four. Who else want to line on the draw?
Agenda number five, an ordinance providing for a new zone in a certain territory in City of Ponderup, Arkansas.
Let's go back.
Oh, sorry.
Four, four, excuse me.
Agenda number four, an ordinance establishing the Aquatic Center as a new department within the city government, amendment section two dash one twenty-one, in article four, chapter two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas, to list the Aquatic Center as a new department within the administrative framework of the city, to make technical corrections to section two dash one twenty-one and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas with the vote in the public's view of the Callan Junior Aquatic Center, it has become apparent that it would advance the oversight and administration of the facility by removing the front management of Parkland Recreation Department and establishing a new department with a director appointed and supervised by the mayor. And whereas the administrative framework of the city as detailed in section two dash one twenty-one should be revised to improve the Aquatic Center as an apartment and otherwise updated. Now therefore be resolved by the City House of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas, section one, that the Callan Junior Aquatic Center is removed from the management of the Parkland Department and established as a separate department within the administrative framework of the city. Section two, the section two dash one twenty-one in article four, chapter two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas, is amended as follows. The administrative framework of the city, a city government shall consist of the following departments, police, fire, emergency services, transit, inspection and zoning, city areas, animal control, economic, community development, financing, uh, collection, human resource, park and recreation, Aquatic Center, legal executives, building maintenance, and district courts. Section three, all ordinance of Aquatic Order to be accomplished with, with the ordinance of utility to extend the conflict, section four, the phrase, the sentence, the program, and other sections of the ordinance are clearly available and should be reserved for the passing law by a court of law, then the remaining parts of the case will be given full force and effect. Section five, this ordinance being of general current nature, the court will ensure it's published in the national law, section six, this ordinance shall take effect on the thirty-fourth day after its adoption.
Suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading.
Say.
This is probably moved in second, that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second reading, roll call please.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockum Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanner, Councilmember Fraser, Councilmember Brunson.
An ordinance establishing that Aquatic Center is a new department within the city government, amendment section two dash one twenty-one in article four, chapter two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas, to list the Aquatic Center as a new department within the administrative framework of the city, to make technical corrections to section two dash one twenty-one and for related purposes.
Suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
And that's what I'm gonna say.
Say.
Okay, suspend rule in second, that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockum Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanner. Councilmember Fraser, Councilmember Brunson.
Mayor, you, you would have to vote to advance it, we need, uh, two thirds of the, definitely five.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the first one, I, I will, I.
So, could you, you have?
I'm sorry.
The mayor has to vote, because we need two thirds of the, of the.
I'll be chief of the class. Two thirds of the council.
To, to pass the motion. While we were talking, while I was talking about that, I thought we, when, if this person could be hired, and I thought it would be emergency, that we would need it.
That's what we did.
We do, we do it now, we, uh, to finish it tonight, but it's, it's, it's thirty-one days or thirty days after the passage, so.
We, we need to put in the emergency clause.
Say it again.
We, we, we're going to establish the emergency clause when we add that tonight, when we have to. And if it, if it doesn't, if it doesn't become a department to thirty-one days, it's just a few days after the hire, because the person doesn't come on board till the twenty. So just.
What did you say? Oh. Can we do the emergency clause tonight, don't make it, it doesn't necessarily say in print.
I think it's a significant change to the, to the question. So, third, the thirty-first month of July, it's still going to affect the end of the month.
We're six day.
I'm sorry?
We in the sixth day?
I know, but the change won't really go into effect until the twentieth of May.
Well, it won't be able to go into effect until the sixth of next month. That's right. That's what I said.
But still, that's, that's still just a few days.
Tell me, tell me my basis, it'd end up being a, a six plus, six plus, ten, ten, two plus seven. Every seventeen days different. Is different.
The third, the thirty-nine days after tonight, still will be the emergency night.
Every seventeen days different. Right, and I think it'll be good. Well, thirty-one. We could bring it back in the, if it does define.
Councilmember Brown.
We'll bring it back, next evening. Only if you wanted to reach a call, I mean, we can do a special file meeting, if you just devote it after the, or you can be with, with the game.
Yeah, we can hold this, we can table this one, come back the next meeting.
And then come back and pass it with the emergency clause.
Never, we get the time frame, what you mean.
What is, what is our next meeting something here?
Here, we have a. Not next meeting, we're gonna come before the twenty. How next meeting, when is our next meeting?
If we pass this, it'll be next month before we come to it, but if we wait till the next meeting, we can pass the emergency clause and go back immediately, in the middle of the month.
Twenty is our next meeting.
The twenty?
So we can actually pass it that.
It's going to affect on the twenty, that's the thing.
Right.
So everything gonna stay attached?
So we're going to table, uh, agenda item number, and bring it back next month, with the emergency clause attached to it.
Next meeting.
At the, at the next, uh.
That will be that way.
Twenty of May.
That will be that.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, what? Yes, he's been conversing over here, um, it seems that he could still hire this gentleman.
Yeah.
On the twentieth, you could still hire him, and then whatever the transfer from the department is actually created, he could move it with the department, so he could not have to wait to be hired.
That's the understanding, so, in my opinion, this could, even though it doesn't go into effect until thirty-one days after it's passed, it's still okay, because it's just separating the department into its own departments, but it has nothing to do with the hire and the operation. And it might work better to do that, because then that would separate those finances and everything at the six month period of the year. And we're, we're looking at some things, when it comes to that right now.
So we want, which one of four?
I think we should re-engage this tonight, and pass it, and they're going to affect on the sixth of, uh, on the sixth of June.
So, so that's what, what hiring, too, right?
No, the hiring, the CFO, who happened.
That's what I'm saying, people get hired. This is separation in the, separation in the, in section, this is section separation.
This has nothing to do with the position.
So we on voting of the second reading, going into the third reading?
Okay, we're going into the third reading.
Third reading, third.
So, can we get a roll call, for the third reading?
Did we get that already, I have a question.
And I think we got the third reading, I had to go, I went back and added my.
That was the second reading, so we need to.
The third.
Read it.
So are you gonna table it?
No, no, we're not table, oh, we're gonna finish it.
Okay, roll call, you ready?
So this is for the third reading.
It's been, it's been moved and probably second, that we suspend the rules and read this ordinance one third time.
Yeah, we know.
You've already made?
No, we're gonna read it twice, we're gonna read it the third time, yeah.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockum Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown Senior.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanner. Councilmember Fraser, Councilmember Brunson.
Did you?
Aye.
An ordinance establishing the Aquatic Center as a new department within the city government, amendment section two dash one twenty-one in article four of section, uh, chapter two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas, with the Aquatic Center as a new department within the administrative framework of the city, and intent for correction to section two dash one twenty-one and for related purposes.
I'm going to, second.
This is moved and properly second, that an ordinance established the Aquatic Center as a new department within the city government, amendment section two dash one twenty-one in article four of chapter two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Ponderup, Arkansas, to list the Aquatic Center as a new department within the administrative framework of the city, to make technical corrections to section two dash one twenty-one and for related purposes be approved, the floor is open for discussion.
Second one, council.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Uh, so would the, would the Aquatic Center become its own department, would they also take over our splash park?
If, everything water related, so they'll take over the splash pad, and then we're looking at putting another splash pad downtown. Our grant is being written for that, so they would have oversight of everything water related, and if any of your pools or anything, and it's because it's such a big operation, and we've expanded the parks department, when we. And it's because it's such a big operation, and we've expanded the parks department when we added park roads, because that brought in another golfing operation, along with, I think that's like two hundred thirty-four additional acres that they have to maintain. So it's hard for the parks director to manage so much. So Aquatics is really an entity within itself, and it's better if it's a standalone department.
And ask your question.
We're gonna have all storm oversight. Any other questions?
I had one, but I forget. It was just a repeat of something that we already talked about.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, let's vote all in favor, let it be known by standing up.
Aye.
In your polls. Okay, ordinance approved.
Item number five, an ordinance providing for rezoning in certain territories in the city of Arkansas. Four thousand blocks of newly derived sound up for the first reading.
Where the city of Arkansas planning committee held a public meeting on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, as provided for in section six, act one eighty-six of sections of said Arkansas. The purpose of which was to hear any and all persons interested in amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Arkansas by providing for the zoning of certain properties. Whereas it has been expressly stated by the city council of the city of Arkansas that the zoning ordinance should be amended to provide for the zoning of said property. Now therefore, we are made up of the city council of the city of Arkansas, section one, and upon this where our part of being the same as here by itself, and the five eyes, one light industrial for all purposes as set forth in five, the zoning ordinance, section two. All ordinance of the park ordinance and complex, here we go, two, two, extend such conflict.
Good, um, council. Oh, let me just one question on that. So basically, right now, it's a, it's an R two. Oh, I was just wondering, is it an R two right now, they're trying to go to industrial, because it's in an industrial area, and I think it's labeled residential. According to, it's here, that's information. Okay.
That's not the same.
She, she was here earlier before it even started, that's information.
I think it's R two.
It's, it's R one. R one. R one.
R one, okay.
Okay.
So, R one, yeah, it is.
It's light industrial.
Right, it's trying to go to, uh, yeah, light industrial, so from R one to light industrial, which is what everything else is around it. That's all you have, councilman, right?
Yes.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to begin funding toward flood mitigation for a housing development project.
Whereas a development park of housing partners, one, L L T, has applied, applied for loading some housing tax credit for the purpose of constructing a housing development to be occupied by low-income income and elderly persons. And whereas both sites for the housing development is located on the corner of Ohio and East Harding, which was previously the location for South East Carolina City. And whereas, in preparation of said project, the investors elevated land above the flood plain at approximately a cost of seventy thousand dollars, introducing the cost of dirt, hauling, compaction, and labor. And whereas, the city of Arkansas through the procurement process was to let the contractor to perform the land elevation for this project, once collected. Once collected, the contract shall be submitted to the city council for final approval. And whereas, the developer has agreed to bear a significant portion of the cost to raise the property above the flood plain, and has proposed to the city to commit five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for this, uh, expense. Once developers receive this commitment, it will be able to finalize this project. And whereas, the city of Arkansas should agree to make the aforementioned contribution for the cost of flood mitigation for the proposed housing development. Now therefore, it will be resolved by the city council of the city of Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized to tender a letter of commitment for the city of Arkansas to contribute five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the cost of land elevation for the housing development located on the corner of Ohio and East Harding, previously the location of the thousands of United States.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been properly moved in second that a resolution authorizing the mayor to begin funding toward flood mitigation for a housing development project be approved. The floor is open for discussion.
Let's have one question. So with, um, so once we do that, is that, does one continue to fund the other, so with, that funding for that development would have to be locked in before we do the funds to it?
So, we're submitting an application, the developer's submitting an application to Apple, and Apple will not consider, uh, redo the application as long as the man is in the flood zone. So they're asking us to, you know, do flood mitigation.
Right.
I have the process to, before they approve them, and the application is for the two million dollar, uh, tax credit, uh, grant that they're applying for. Yes, sir.
What would this five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars come from?
Right now, it's where the company needs to get the projects.
So, so, let me ask a question in reference to something that we.
Let me say this in reference to that. We had already approved, uh, in our last meeting, portion of that, a portion of that, because the developer thought that they could mitigate the flooding after they got their approval from Apple. But then they found out later that, and they want, they had moved and basically had, of the mitigation. But then, you know, man still asked, once they found out the application wouldn't be eligible for it to do until it was out of the flood, so that's the reason we're coming back, what they're pushing.
So this is out of the way? You don't have to answer it, it's just in my brain. So, there may be some million dollars that was put out for the Black Mayor Association? I really was one of the ones that wanted the money to be placed in the visual city, at least five months, separated themselves with a thirty-two percent of the money. Have we got that, that money separated, could we have used that for that project? I just wanted.
It's totally different. We're, we're, we're working on a, a development here, that's our, for our drainage, basically.
That, that just. So, so mayor, what'd you say to finish? You say, we're gonna raise the man up to a more flood?
Yes, the, the portion, not the entire site, that's the twelve acres that we're going to develop, we're developing in phases, and so the first phase is, uh, approximately twelve acres that will be mitigated and compensated. And we're, uh, the engineers have told us, I think it's about a foot or so all the way across, and I think this is a good, uh, estimate that we've got, number of costs here. Although this five seventy-five is not your solid amount, that's the reason we put in seven hundred, longer than higher than that. But once we, if this approved, then we put it out to bid. And this, uh, most reasonable money we found was five seventy-five, and then goes out to bid, we have no guarantee that that's what it's going to come back.
So will they approve the grant with the contract, with, with none of these funds replaced to do that, or will it have to be totally complete before they would consider it?
Um, well, what did you say on that when we, we was talking to A G about that the other day, Friday?
Well, right now, we're trying to get that, we're a conditional approval of the land, but in order to, um, show the city seriousness in getting that commitment, we need to show that we're willing to put this out to bid and.
So the promise of that happened from the city is, now for them to get the grant?
That's what we're hoping, and right now, that's, that's our.
So if we don't get it, we'll be stuck with it. It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen.
No, either way it goes, the, the, for us to build on the land, we're not losing anything, because you can't build on the land until we do mitigate it.
Right.
It has to be done. And even if this developer doesn't, whatever she also handles for us, it has to be done.
Okay.
And we hope that whoever does that also will be able to get the, you know, the federal fines going to have the open hood, and they're not going to consider it as long as the city. Any other questions? Okay, here in nine, um, let's vote, all in favor of this resolution, let it be known by standing up.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Item number seven, a resolution of amendment, Atlas William Brown Junior to the Pineville Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees.
Whereas there is a vacancy in one of the facilities reserved for the city of Pineville on the border of Jefferson for the Pineville Jefferson County Library System. And whereas, the mayor has elected to appoint Atlas William Brown Junior to fill the vacancy subject to council approval. Now therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Pineville, Arkansas, that when his appointment of Atlas William Brown Junior towards the peace of the Pineville Jefferson County Library System, is overturned to this prior, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption, second.
This is properly moved in second that a resolution appointing Atlas William Brown Junior to the Pineville Jefferson County Library Board of Trustees be approved. The floor is open for discussion.
Now, mayor, I don't think you could find a good person to do this. I go with Brown, self, he worked, put my wife out of U A P B library, he was the most trustworthy employee, so I know we found a good thing, you're gonna go to the Jefferson County Library. So I gave him the job, great guy, he's a great partner.
I didn't know we had that background for, uh, the library will sign for it until I raise the application. All in favor of this resolution, let it be known by standing up.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved. Let's welcome Mr. Atlas Brown.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Item number eight, a resolution, amendment resolution number four, seven, three, nine, to correct a parcel number of a property.
Whereas it is necessary to correct the parcel number one of the property listed in resolution number forty-seven thirty-nine, passed on the number twenty, twenty-three, and being titled a resolution finding for placement of cost of correcting privileges on taxpayers as early tax and collectives as such. Now therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Arkansas, resolution number forty-seven thirty-nine, passed on the number twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, limited as follows. And with reference to line one, three, on page nine thereof, regarding the property owned by Count Harwick Daniel, uh, parcel number on line three, which is corrected. The co- the co- the department will ensure that this resolution is properly filed with the, uh, Jefferson County District Court and report to clear of any confusion.
Move for adoption, second.
This is moving property second, that a resolution, amendment resolution number seven thirty-nine, to correct a parcel number of property be approved. The floor is open for discussion. Questions here in nine, all in favor of this resolution, let it be known by standing up.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Item number nine, a resolution revising the salary range for the director of the Park Area Development Aquatic Center.
Whereas Carl Davis Junior Aquatic Center has experienced great road expenses opening and the possible director of the facility has grown as well. And whereas, to remain competitive on the job market qualified individuals to serve as director and clear out the mission of buildings of the position, the salary range for position should be revised. Now therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Arkansas, the salary range for position of the director of the Park Area Development Aquatic Center is hereby revised in six as follows, the amount not less than four seven thousand one hundred and six dollars per annum, but not exceeding fifty-six thousand per annum, such to any superseding legislation of the county.
Move for adoption, second.
This is moved, uh, properly moved in second that a resolution revising the salary range for the director of the Park Area Development Aquatic Center be approved. The floor is open for questions or discussion. Here in nine, all in favor of this resolution, let it be known by standing up.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution approved.
Item number ten, a resolution to acknowledge and ratify that the veins of real property from Simmons Bank to the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Pineville, Arkansas, including the reservation, reservations and restrictions contained in instrument of the veins, and to extend the reservation and naming rights to adjoining properties owned on lease by the city of Pineville, Arkansas.
Whereas Simmons Bank conveyed cycles to end on October third, first, twenty twenty-two, reported in the real property records of Jefferson County, Arkansas, on the book seven, twenty twenty-two, in the book twenty twenty-two R, at page nine five hundred five hundred sixty-nine. The Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Pineville, certain real property or property particularly described as, described as set forth below. And whereas, the purpose of the convention was towards the Urban Renewal Agency to use the property for the development or charitable purpose of operating and maintaining a community center on the property and adjoining real property, which is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Sixth Avenue and Main Street in Pineville, Arkansas, which may include a food hall or other restaurant space, where retail innovators, micro markets, and simple features. And whereas, Simmons First Foundation would grant the right to take the property or to direct the feeback of the property to another charity of the foundation's choice, in the event the U R A or the city of Arkansas, Arkansas ever attempts to convey the property to a third party, or seek to use the property for the purpose of setting forth N D Ds. And whereas, the bank reserves a permanent irremovable and exclusive name over and across the property for the purpose of maintaining and operating and operating the home machines or similar items in the location of the bank's usual selection, which even may be transferred from time to time by a real estate bank and the U R A or the city to another mutually acceptable location as set forth in N D Ds. And whereas, the U R A agrees that the bank has the right to maintain an automatic home machine or solar device in and on the property or community center, and further agrees that no retail bank, credit, community property institution, or lender investment bank, trust company, or business engaged primarily in lending shall be permitted in and on the property or community center of the bank. And whereas, the bank reserves the permanent irremovable and exclusive naming rights on all sides of existing or future structure or structures on the property, and the bank is permitted at its expense to install the signage as the bank reasonably desires on all sides of any such structure or structure. And whereas, the U R A agrees that the bank has the right and continues right of first refusal for any other signage to be placed in or on the community center. And whereas, the U R A agrees that no cottage, advertising, any retail bank, credit, community property institution, or cylinder industrial bank, trust company, or business engaged primarily in lending shall be permitted in and on the property or community center other than the bank. And whereas, the reservations and restrictions in favor of the bank are transferable by the bank to any successor or acting of the bank. And whereas, the city desires to acknowledge, ratify, and affirm the exclusive naming rights as set forth in N D Ds. And whereas, the city, in consideration of two million dollars awarded directly or indirectly by the bank and or the foundation toward the completion of the community center project based on recognition of the city, as to the amount of funding necessary to complete the community center project, designed to extend the exclusive naming rights to any and all real property owned or leased by the city, or any of the agency, department, or commissions thereof of joining the property or community center, which are part of the community center project as long as the property is owned by the U R A or the city, or any other agency, department, or commissions thereof. Now therefore, it is resolved by the city council of the city of Pineville, Arkansas, section one, the city council of the city of Pineville, Arkansas, announced and ratified that the bank from the money to the Urban Renewal Agency and acknowledged, agrees, and ratifies the conditions, reservations, and restrictions set forth in the D D included but not limited to the exclusive naming right. Section two, the city council of the city of Pineville, in consideration of two million dollars awarded directly or indirectly by the bank and or foundation for the completion of a huge community center project, which amount is the amount of funding necessary to complete the community center project hereby. which amount is the amount of funding necessary to complete the community center project hereby extend the naming exclusive naming right, which shall be permanent irrevocable and exclusive in favor of the bank to other real property owned or leased by the city of Pine Brook, Arkansas, or any other agency, department, commission thereof, which are subject to the decision of the City Council now or in the future so long as any property is specifically adjoining the property or community center and is intended to be uh a part of the community center project so long as the property is owned by the Urban Renewal Agency or the city of Pine Brook, or any other agency, department, or commission thereof.
Move adoption. Second.
It has been moving property second that a resolution to acknowledge, conquer, and ratify the conveyance of real property from Simmons Bank to the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Pine Brook, Arkansas, including the reservations and restrictions, restrictions contained in the instrument of conveyance and to extend the reservation and naming rights to adjoining properties owned or leased by the city of Pine Brook, Arkansas be approved. The floor is open for discussion.
Ma'am, ma'am. Ma'am, I got one reservation that I need to kind of deal with, and that's with lines thirty two through thirty six about the uh ability to assign the use of the uh uh property to other entities. Uh I I can go with this if we have an agreement that we'll come back in a future meeting, most likely our next meeting, and put forth a memorable understanding that will establish the management team of this facility to ensure that the city has the buy-in and has all the knowledge. Because what I'm concerned about is is if we don't do this right and we lose the property or we cease to use it for the purpose, then we have the bank utilizing a six million dollar city fund project. And what I would like to see is us put partners uh around the table that will include our economic development department, uh maybe members from the uh Urban Renewal Agency, go forward, put them all into a management team that will all know what decisions are being made about the rent, the uh utilities, what improvements that we may need to do to be cost-saving so we won't run in excess of what our budget is for M and O. Uh that's my only thing that it is it's a pretty strong resolution that gives a lot, you know, authority to the bank. Uh but I need to bring our people into the fold to be able to make decisions that'll make sure that we won't lose the operations of it. Is it can that be agreed, ma'am?
Ma'am, can I ask a question? So who put together this information? It's very complex to people. Understand and and one and one chapter, that's where as it says, and then another chapter, that's where as it said, it's like confusing. It's like a page and a quarter. It's two pages and a short paper page of confusion. When you think you understand what is going on and then you get the uh the next whereas, it kind of confuses you though. Frankly, I think this needs to go back and come back in a way that and it's more unclear and understanding to us. Because right now, as much as I try to, I've read it, as much as I try to get a complete understanding, I I'm I'm only getting a selfish understanding. I'm not getting a public understanding. This understanding is vague and I tried to uh make sense of it and it has not been cleared up to me.
Okay, so.
Was there?
We had a we had a question on the table.
Well, yeah, my question was, was it, you know, was the council agreeable? Uh meanwhile, it come it agreeable to us coming after we made the decision on this, coming back with the M O U on the management of the facility? I I'm just wanting to make sure that city, we as a city, as a city have our people at the table and they'll make decisions on how much we'll rent spaces for, how we'll pay utilities, and those types of things that will ensure that we could operate the building without any kind of uh.
But do you realize you're asking for a back backhand handshake? That's a doctor's handshake. It's not documented. What are you saying documented?
I think he's adding to. I think they'll add to the management and operation and add clarity and structure to the management and operation. Is that what I?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we as the council will come back at our next meeting with the M O U of management. We will design how we'll manage the facility now. What what this document is basically saying is that the original agreement with with the Urban Renewal Agency is reiterated that the bank is conveying property, that the bank is is uh is getting a conveyance of property that if we don't for for the purposes stated, that if those purposes are not met, then they get the authority to assign another person and they get naming rights in addition to the ability to have an A T M at the site.
I can't give away property like that and they can name it to me.
You're saying?
Well, I can't give it away like that.
Well, we we're not giving away. We don't have it.
No, you're giving the rights away.
What's that?
You're giving the naming rights.
And we don't name it and the whole property is. We don't do it.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, there should no, the mass should should not be the answer.
In the third, in the in the in the last part.
Ryan, you want to speak to the mayor?
Please, council, thank you. I would say just upon the clarity. Uh so it is a very complex deal, but it's the focus is of the, sorry, the focus is of the former bank. Thank you again. Thank you, council. The the focus is of the former bank, uh drive group. So that's the property that they have conveyed to the project. And that's and so there, in addition to that property that they conveyed, when they talk about adjoining properties, now they're bringing in, they would like to have naming rights for the entire, the the adjoining properties to the bank that was conveyed. And so, uh but that does come and play with all them lockers says, if for some reason the uh bank branch is not operated in the purposes stated, or the former bank branch is a micro market retail space incubator, then there is a possibility of the entire uh complex being uh transferred to another charitable deal to try to make it operate as such. So that's all all that is saying. Uh but it is a a very good project. I would like to say there is a um a narrative that this is maybe a bailout, but it's not. These these monies were always a part of the budget to complete the project, to relieve the citizens of the tax burden, similar to how we raised the other billion dollars that we came before we presented. And so again, it's just about the bank branch. It was Simmons. They could have just named that one and not given the property. But they are asking for the entire complex. So that's why you see the adjoining properties is what they donate.
So explain, explain community center.
Yeah, uh yeah, um I believe that's just a uh.
You believe?
Yeah, I would add, I probably would refer to the city attorneys to uh why they use that particular word. But it kind of defines what the micro market, et cetera, in there.
They 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 used to talk, quit, do this. What is it? Talk to them like they can't do.
It's just a term, it's it's just a term of art to to describe that that area. And I would like to add.
Well, you described an area, community center.
For the use.
Come on, come on, Joey, come on, come on.
That was not our description. The document was essentially drafted by attorneys for the.
Well, talk, buddy, you got to, okay? No, no, this is a serious business. And then this, no, 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 this is serious business.
Let them finish though. They got to finish.
Yeah, let them talk. Talk to the banks.
I'll talk louder.
Thank you.
The the language at this description did not originate with us. It came out of the attorneys for the bank plaintiffs in the relevant draft in the legislation. The uh just to go back a little bit, the property itself is not in our name. Simmons made the way the property to the Urban Renewal Agency, which signed off and had accepted the reservations that were contained in the deed. To make any changes now would require the the bank to be willing to uh enact a a superseding document and the cooperation of the Urban Renewal Agency to go along with that. Because right now, all this is is that it's kind of a future looking document. It says, if we in the end it should come into the ownership of the city, we agree that we recognize the rights of Simmons and the property as described in the deed that they've already given and accepted by the Urban Renewal Agency.
So so what you're saying, the city and Pine Brook and Simmons were owning the property?
Simmons did own the property that uh Mr. Doctor Waller was talking about, the the section that uh the branch bank was located. But as he's told you, in return for the contribution of that property and for the monetary contributions, they want to provide to name it.
So we're there to deal.
So whatever.
We couldn't deal Simmons, because the property is left. Had owned. We want, the city will not own the property anymore.
Well, Urban Renewal Agency will own the property and eventually when it's citizens of the city, all their properties revert to the city. So we will own the property.
Yeah, you you all know that we be so busy, we not could, we can't go back to it. This this thing does not go backwards. It's constantly moving. City go.
But if the Urban Renewal is dissolved, the property then would go back to the city.
But then you got all this paperwork. You got to go in and track it and correct it.
So let me ask this question.
Your name cannot be on the property if you're gonna give it up.
If the city or U R now.
U R A decide, well, they're not operating that community center the way it was intended. Does property transfer back to the bank?
Yes, it's like revert of all in the deed. And therefore they, like they say in the resolution, they give it to another nonprofit to try to keep it operating.
But it will no longer be in possession of the city?
I would, that's what I believe S A is, but yes, that it would revert back to the bank's ownership.
So the entire block, not just part of the gate, but the whole thing?
That part I'm not sure. But when he says adjoining properties, I believe you don't get that. It would be, it would be just that property that was designated to the city. That's what I would all too.
So so how much is the land worth?
Yeah, also.
How much is the land worth?
To clarify further and bring it all home, they would not need to take possession of the U A P B property right.
Right, it's they own.
So yes, they own. So their only purpose is to what they donate, and that would be the bank. So if for some reason this did not operate again as intended use, and they want to say, well, we can turn it back into a bank branch again. That's their, that's their, their problem. But I think it's more important to that uh realize besides that, um that the two million dollars are part of budget composition. And without that, you have to find another source.
Explain budget composition.
So what the budget, what the sources of revenue to complete the project?
Two million dollars.
Yes, sir, from Simmons.
That's a budget composition. Come on, man.
So.
That's not chump change.
I know. And so we're very grateful that they're willing to provide the seven figure contribution to help us complete this project. But again.
Ma'am.
Yeah.
And now, sir. And from my hand, what it is, I don't know, it is an issue though. It's a six million dollar project and the bank gives two million and then there's four million that the city contributed. The issue is going to be with it simply like the bank would benefit from the city developing property that they conveyed, but they get twice as much value for it. So if you get four million dollars worth of property, it's two million dollar donation. Now my issue, you know, I understand the budgetary issue. Uh my issue is having all hands on deck to ensure that everybody is working to the maximum to make sure that this property is being utilized for the purpose that it was designed to be. That's that's why, therefore, that's why, you know, for me to support this, I gotta have an agreement for all part of that we'll come back with a management agreement that will put the city in its commissions, agencies, in that type of thing.
I agree with you, but I think it all needs to happen together. I don't think we need to pass something and then go back. I think we need to have everything established on the front end before we pass this. May I add to that?
And that's my exact, that's my concern.
Right now, uh the way that we are functioning in terms of uh the management and preparation with private funds is part of the agreement we presented last time. We contracted someone who was working with the entrepreneurs that have been identified and getting all the certifications and things, uh permits, whatever, for the location. So that is currently in place. So uh if we can do something, I mean, that will be okay because if that person can come to the table with you all to talk about the progress they've made and in the lease agreements and things that are uh in place or being prepared. This is kind of secondary to that because of the deed needs to be, I guess, ratified as well as the dollars need to be, um I guess, considered, whether in their firmative or not. And so if we can do those dollars, that's very substantial to us having a conversation about the end of. We don't get the dollars again, most of the time.
Right, well, I I get that, but I just want to make sure that we're not basically giving away something that we having trouble. So we're basically making a commitment and we have no way of knowing whether or not it's gonna be functional or not because we don't have any part of the operation of it. So how can we say that it's gonna continue to be a community center with the intents and purposes that are in this resolution if we have no say so with what's going on?
Well, so that is a good question. That's why you have a commission. So that happens a lot, right?
Right.
You put that authority to a renewal agency for that authority to manage that part of it. Or and Lockit is saying, he's trying to close that loophole by saying we need to bring everybody around the table to get a understanding.
Why would you pass this before you bring them to the table?
That's very good question. We've been working on this for quite some time. And it's, again, it's part of the construction budget money. It's the last dollars in to finish the project. And as far as, since they they are the last dollars in, invoices are coming, gonna get two more invoices, that would be three. And this two million dollars will close out the project.
So this, so this two million dollars will happen if we don't pass this? Well, I what I don't understand is that you have uh Urban Renewal Agency is the one who entered this contract. Then shouldn't it go forward based off the contract that you have with U R A?
Uh that was, I believe that's a uh question for the attorney because I really didn't know if it need to go to U R A or if it need to go to the city. I believe that because of dissolution potential, then they want to have cities buying as well.
Yes, I I um about a year ago, we would have had this problem because U R A has perpetual, had a source of funding. Now here was the problem. Nobody envisioned creating this incubator of retail and restaurant without a tax to support its maintenance and operations. And that's why I'm insisting that we got to have, we got to come back our next meeting with a management agreement because when this, when this whole project was conceived, U R A had a budget of maybe one point five to two million. So they had a way to support this project. But now we as a city, once this project, here's the worst case scenario, guys. We sign this, we get two million dollars, we get a building, we can't support it, we lose a building. So that's where I'm trying to get all hands on deck to say that we have a project that was envisioned by an initiative that had tax dollars. Now those tax dollars are no longer, if if we had the the five H renewed, then we had a way of sustaining the building. Now we're gonna have to come up with creative ways that may require community development funds, may require some other funds from other entities to make sure that this is a sustainable project. So that's why I'm insisting that we have a management agreement that puts what we as a council think are the bodies around the table that would ensure that this project has has a chance. So my question, who owns the property?
Urban Renewal Agency. It's been deeded to the Urban Renewal Agency.
Deeded from who?
From Simmons Bank, tell the, we're talking about the bank branch owned, deeded to the Urban Renewal Agency, which is again.
Well, that's their problem.
Let me inject on that real quick. You started the Urban Renewal.
That's it.
No.
I mean, by a bully.
No. But what was started the Urban Renewal?
We came to the microphone advocating that a Urban Renewal Agency needed to be found, but it was voted on by the council.
It was the only thing I heard that the Urban Renewal was belonging to the city, I was wondering some trouble come up. But before then, it, it was not, it was not owned by the city, in fact, all of that trucks and all that vehicles was, it, it was ordered and bought through the Urban Renewal and the Go Forward Agency. Oh, yo, whatever, the city had nothing to do with the bidding of the trucks and the, and the equipment that they had, which we have a street department, which should have gone to the street department, but it didn't. So, Urban Renewal does not belong to the city.
So the decision is, we move forward and vote for the resolution as it is, establishing an M O U later? And council member Lockit, I think we're starting the same session, and that would be your recommendation?
Yeah, that's my recommendation, that, one, bring in M O U of a management agreement with the member in this, of understanding, of agreeable partners, that we the council would put the right people, uh, that would manage the project, you know, uh. But, but, and here's the worst case scenario, guys, we can vote this down, and let's say, let's say that we use the current budget that U R A has to complete the facility. Now, they've already, all the things that we're voting on, it's already been agreed upon in the deed with the Urban Renewal Agency.
So why do they need this?
Well, because the problem is.
They don't, they don't need it.
Well, the problem is, i- i- is that the five H goes away in September, if Urban Renewal is dissolved, if the, if this reverts to the city, we'll be forced to litigate that we didn't agree to this, and this really is not, is not of our doing. So now you got a situation where you're saying that the bank conveyed property to an entity that was, that was dissolved by the city.
That would be confusing.
Where it's gonna be Matthews, and that's what I'm saying, what this does is clear up, that everything they agreed to with Urban Renewal, they agreed to with the city. And the city gives this blessing to what was agreed upon. Now, my only condition is that we have a team, since this was really, it was born of a tax that no longer exists. So we gonna have to be kind of creative to figure out how the M and O is, you know, maintenance operation is gonna be done, because it really was, that, the first idea was the tax was gonna sustain the facility, but now we gonna have to be creative. You know, uh, and come up with some city funds to probably show up this project, because it won't be able to do it on its own, because the people we're trying to help are limited resource people, so they gonna be able to charge the folks a thousand dollars a month for rent. So, I mean, it's gonna be, you know, pretty interesting. But all I'm saying is, is that we play with the hand we dealt and come up with a management team that includes, uh, our economic and community development team, we can put some other folks at the table, uh, some of the existing people, Mr. Watley, and those kind of people. We put, we put everybody on, on, around the table, so nobody dropped the ball to say that we didn't know what was going on.
I, I would have, I would be more likely to want to pass this if we already had that in place.
I agree, you said the whole lot, Chris. Okay, well, we can come back with that.
That, that's all I'm saying, I, I just, you know, for us to sign on to this, because U R A signed on to it, we're just gonna follow along, I would.
Just giving our city a deal.
I, I, I just don't know what, how long would this not have to function as a community center before it goes somewhere else with the sign perpetually?
Somebody explain to me, community center.
So, oh.
Please.
It, it is a community center, but people from the community, we need to say that.
So you gonna build one?
It's already been built, um.
Okay, so, the questions are, and, and our move, if we vote on this and approve it tonight, and come up with that, uh, develop that M O U later, or do we take this?
I, I think if there's a recommendation to take, to take, and come back with that recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, you want.
You make that motion now, say it.
I think, I think.
Now, now Ryan, let me ask you this, make sure I understand, is the disbursement of the two million dollars here from?
Passing, yes.
The passing of this?
Yes.
And you need the two million dollars to complete the project?
But the question I have is why?
Why? Why is, why is?
Oh, it's voting on this tonight, they tell you the two million, we weren't at the table in the first place.
So, again, the two million has alwa- always been part of the conversation, I think we've known that for years now.
I understand, okay, I understand.
It's really vote to accept the money in exchange for the nine million, because you have, uh, U R A has already accepted the money, accepted the, the building.
So, I'm saying, we're at this point, if the agreement is already signed, and why is it so imperative that the council tonight vote to approve this when it's already been approved, it's already been signed, it's already been somebody's attorney, the other person's attorney? And they've all come to a conclusion that, okay, this is what we're gonna do. So why is it now that we have to make this decision to agree with whatever they came up with that we had no part of, that's gonna be basically giving city property away if something doesn't go right? Well, we don't know what could go right or wrong, but we, we weren't at the table in the first place.
So for my clarity, you would not be giving city property away, well, you will be giving back the property that, that you were, that you received.
But it's attached to.
So, my clarity from the attorneys, they're saying only the community center, if they, that will revert it back, so that's the only thing in the deed, right? It's the community center.
Right, but, but we've invested money into it as well.
Well, actually, the two million finishes the community center, if you notice, that's the last one that's not finished. So, again, it's, it's about what you guys.
Well, every, every time.
I, I, I think I've done a thorough job of trying to explain what we are in the budget process, that the city did not own this property, it was conveyed, and the only thing we're burnt back based on the city attorney is the community center. And so, uh, at that point, whether, why it had to come to the city council, I'm not sure of that. That, I didn't know, I, I don't know because of receiving of funds, I'm not sure, but it's here, uh, the money is needed for the project, and other than that, I don't know. I do agree with Al and Lockit though, about the management part, about having a meeting.
That's it.
We need to have that meeting first.
I mean, that, but that, all that's already been going on.
Okay, so they, they, I did make a motion that we table this resolution.
Can I say?
And we will come back.
Good, 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 for the, the M O U and the resolution simultaneously, so.
This motion and second, that this, this resolution be tabled, all over the place there. All right, so that's all. So, all right, thank you.
Two things before.
Did I add a number there?
Just, just two things. This, you, for this to have any effect, you'll have to have a representative from the bank, who actually built and committed the bank, to be alteration to what they've already done. And you'll have to have a representative of the Urban Renewal Agency, because they are technically the owners of the property.
And they should be here, and they should have been.
It's a little bit nice, but you can anticipate every, you know, possible objection. But, the second thing is, you've already articulated very well the reasons that any donor would want to have security for their donation. The agency, it's like if I was gonna give money to a business that looked like it might go out of, go bankrupt, and someone else takes over the business, and I've made a significant investment of that business. I wanna make sure the person who takes that over will honor the agreements that I've had with the person who went bankrupt. The bank, the city wants to make sure that if they donate the money, that it is used for the purposes that they donated for. And since the agency that they're, have made the donation to may have a short shelf life, it may not be with us this time next year. They wanna make sure that the entity that inherits all of that, uh, into this property of the city, will abide by it and not give them any problems about the, the terms of their gift. That's the plan.
Three, four sentences. They just, a page and a four, two pages and a four, to set up community, it could have been, everything that you just said could have been done in a nutshell.
Let me just clarify one thing, too, the only thing that the council is saying is that, since this was originally, this agreement was originally made with the agency of the city, and at the time, it was made was pretty sustainable in terms of revenue and cash flow to support this project. The only thing we're saying now, since the citizens didn't choose to renew that funding stream, the council is just insi- insisting on a management team. We're not gonna really undo or have an issue with what was originally conveyed, but we just wanna make sure that we have a management team that the city's interests are being represented by.
Yes, but I have to understand that, that the restrictions are written into the deed instrument, which is a property interest. And if you're willing to basically cover that up with a management team, you'll have to change the deed really, or I suppose if you done that in contract, but it'll require the participation of all the parties who have interest. Which is the bank, which has the refered property interest, and the, uh, the Urban Renewal Agency which owns it.
Well, we, 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 we're not changing any of the language in the deed or the conditions, I'm only saying we're doing a set and force of management of the facility, since Urban Renewal most likely would transition out, that we need all the parties that are gonna be making decisions to be identified, and the city identifies.
We'll want that in, in form of a document that is signed by everybody who has an interest in the property that the city has, to make it have an, uh, eventual interest in property. You just don't wanna have a management team, because you, you want enforceable rights to, uh, to prove the agreement, and for that, that requires that, I would recommend anyway, we reduce it to writing, that set forth as the tail what, what each party's responsibilities and rights are. And it's ratified by the government body, and the U R A is bored and by the bank.
Well, I think all of those people would be silent on the, I mean, they do, uh, memorandum of understanding for millions of dollars, I mean, so, what I'm saying is that the memorandum will be between the parties that we put up at signature.
On the board.
And the unit, the, uh.
The issue is the payment and donation.
I'm explaining, but the, the, the Urban Renewal will be assigned, the bank will be assigned, the city will be assigned, that this is the way that the property will be managed. So, what I'm just trying to make is, to ensure that if we make rent outside of hunt, and we don't have enough to pay light water, gas, that with the city being at the table, we know that decision was made. So, so one thing about it, so who owns the property?
It's a legal issue.
Who owns the property?
We already know. Is that not entangled?
Somebody has the home.
They still need to shoot right now.
Did I remember that? The resolution is expressing the willingness of the city to find Arkansas to utilize federal aid transportation alternative program on downtown Pine Love, Delaware, New Orleans, District, suggestion, connecting to town.
Where the city council understands that federal aid transportation alternative program, or eight percent participation at twenty percent local match in time and rate to improve the entry and structure along State and Third Avenue in downtown Pine Love. And whereas, city council understands that federal aid under our medical funding project on the inverse basis required of the economy, including payment five to the actual monetary even person. And whereas this project, using federal funding will be openly available by the general public and maintained by applicants, the public applicants for the lack of projects. Now therefore, being informed by the city council, city council, Arkansas, one, the city council wants to split pay and afford list to express native and public duty, including maintenance of the project, that's due. The mayor of the city is hereby outlined and directed to execute all incorporated agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of the state of projects that's in progress, city council. The city council will pledge to support and hereby outline the new swap rate with the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action in implementing this project.
Move for that, sir.
If you move a project, thank the resolution expressing willingness of the city of Arkansas to utilize federal aid transportation that chap grant, a training program by the downtown Delaware, New Orleans, and we approve it. And this is, uh, the doors open for the second. This is a chap grant that, uh, Delaware, New Orleans, folks are fine for, and this is given approval for if that grant is acquired, the city will be, the local match will be made of twenty percent. And that money will come from the, uh, the money that's already there, you know, it'll be no new distribution of money. The impressions, council, here we now, are we in favor of this resolution, let me now by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, resolution approved. We have a few announcements that we'd like to make before we adjoint. One is a special proclamation in recognition of first. We, and that proclamation is going to be presented by Councilmember Phil I hope.
City of Pine Love Office of Mayor proclamation, fifty fifth annual professional municipal clerk's week, May fifth, with May eleventh, twenty twenty four. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and by the part of local government that exists throughout the world. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerk, clerks have pled to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on function of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually serve to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education program, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Shirley Boyen Washington, Mayor of the City of Pine Love, do recognize the week of May fifth through eleven, twenty twenty four, as professional municipal clerk. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Ms. Janice L. Robertson, and to all professional municipal clerks for the viral service, services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the community they live in.
Congratulations. In further announcements, um, Saturday, May eleventh, which is this, uh, coming Saturday, will be the spring commencement services for U A P V. And that's what began at ten A M. in the Pine Love Convention Center. The commencement speaker this year will be actress, director, author, Robin Givens. So join U A P V for their spring commencement services if you can. On May fifteenth, we'll have a Razorback, uh, road show coming to Pine Love, each one of you should have, they're calling it one Razorback Road Show, you should have a copy like this in your package, it details what would happen on that day. This road show will be at Leon's Catfish and Steak House, starting at eleven thirty, and it's from eleven thirty to one P M. Any Razorback fans or all Razorback fans in the Pine Love community will have the opportunity to hear from the entire Arkansas Razorbacks athletic team, as they visit us here in Pine Love. Our third announcement is come out and support. Our third announcement is come out and support the Harbor Oaks, uh, ribbon cutting. We have the, put it that, not the clubhouse, the, uh, what's the house called?
Pro shop.
Pro shop. I always want to call it the clubhouse. For the pro shop, for our Harbor Oaks golf course, uh, the, has been renovated. And we will have the ribbon cutting that grand opening on May twenty-third, from eleven A M. till twelve thirty P M. On the twenty-seventh, the twenty-seventh year of the Memorial Black Pilots, it's the twenty-seventh year that we've had the Black Pilots flying in, uh, here in Pine Love, Operation Skyhood, will be here Saturday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, nine thirty, uh, at Granger Fields. I think that, that program, what is placed the twenty-third? Is that the Friday? Usually starts on Friday.
It's Friday.
It's Thursday, that's on Thursday.
Okay, so it's.
Twenty-third, Thursday, Thursday.
Okay, so it's, they have Saturday, give it its Friday, the twenty-fourth, okay? Black Pilots flying. The annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day, sponsored by the Pine Love G B I Committee, is going to be on June seventh, twenty twenty-four, from ten A M. to two P M. Vendor applications are available through Jefferson County Circuit Court. Uh, come out for speakers, vendors, family fun, and food at the Pine Love Convention Center. Everyone is encouraged to wear orange for this event. That ends our announcements for this evening, and we'll go into our public speakers, because no others want to join.
I just want to say, uh, thanks to the party, for your support.
Moving on, say it again.
Proper movement, second, we consider ourselves as a joint. We have three speakers speaking to non agenda items. Our first speaker is Mr. Janks Bridges, who wants to speak in reference to park and recreation operations.
First off, thank you for your time. Uh, I really appreciate y'all giving me a minute to talk. I have, uh, I've been in youth sports. Just tap, just give it a tap. I've been in youth sports for about thirty years. I am a Pine Love native, uh, I am Pine Love Black proud. I have, I have issues, this is not a witch hunt by no means. I want you to think of this as what I'm, I'm discussing, the problems with Parks and Recreation Park. Now, over the years, the last six or seven years, some of y'all have been out to Regional Park, where I've put things on. But anyway, we started back again, trying to do something February, March. Went out, met with, uh, Parks and Recreation Director, and with Terrence Mishner, I believe he's the assistant now. Really liked the gentleman, uh, think he wanted to work with us. So, me and my partner went into this, and we, we want to build this for the city. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna step off, they still want to go to another one. We owe it to the youth of this city. That park is set empty for how many years? Uh, that park is set empty for too long. And you say, well, it's the volunteers of the city. We need the help from the Parks and Recreation Director. If you have a Parks and Recreation Director that advertises it, that, that, that wants to make that park work, then you have something. My partner, Jason Price, he's not here today, he's from Rising, Arkansas. They have, uh, in Rising, they have four girls softball teams. There's nine hundred and five people in the census of Rising, Arkansas. We have one softball team in the City of Pine Love. We are lacking as a community. I love the kids of the community, and I love Pine Love. Don't call a kid a thug until you give them a chance opportunity not to be a thug. I feel, I feel very, very strongly about that. And I feel very strongly that the Parks and Recreation can help. I went out in March, and I, and I told them what needed to be done. Now, the previous director had spent a lot of money out on that park and didn't take care of it. That park could have been fixed properly for six thousand dollars with a substance called Donna Field. It's come out, it comes out of a fly ash product from what, Donny, Donny Thomas. It's super absorbent, okay? It could be fixed if it's put down right. I'm not a rock star. I sold one dedicated for it. But I do care about kids. The people in Whitehall that have that substance down are playing ball tonight. Go to Regional Park and look at it. It's not ready. But it could be. But the ball was dropped again after three or four years. The ball continues to be dropped. Two weekends ago, we put, I would say roughly a thousand people in that park. I don't know if anybody went by, I could get you the exact numbers. We put a thousand people in that park. The city did work, Mr. Mishner did work, I'm not saying he didn't. But he had no help. And it has to come from the Parks and Recreation Director to have the help. My partner spent six hours out there Wednesday, seven hours out there Thursday. I spent two hours, or an hour and a half Friday, we went out at five A M. to make it possible for the children. Yes, we do make a profit, we have not made a profit on this, and I'm gonna go through this, but yes, we do. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and share this where it'll be known, I had a verbal agreement with Ms. Trudy, that I would build this park back if she would give me free rent for the first two or three turns. Okay, she keeps concession stand, okay? Concession stand revenues. I want to share, if I can get it to come up, a post that was posted on Arkansas Fast Pitch about the City of Pine Love, Arkansas. Jason Price shared it. Uh, we have shared numerous ones of these. It was shared for, this is one of, come join us on three sixteen twenty-four at the newly renovated Regional Park in Pine Love, Arkansas. As big name softball, which I'm affiliated with, presents, presents to you the swing in the spring twenty twenty-four. Fans will be able to sit in the Park's custom stadium seating as they watch in the girl, and watch the girls compete for some of the best awards in the state. And then basically, in summary, this week reduced our rates from two hundred and twenty-five to two fifty, you go on Arkansas Fast Pitch and work out, to a hundred and twenty-five dollars to help the city. And we got no sport other than Mr. Mishner. We got no sport. And, and it's just, you know, I, I don't understand it. I, I, I don't understand why it's like this. It's been that way for six years, that park is set out there, that park has been told by numerous people, I believe I shared a post on the Parks and Recreation page, that I'd like you to go share, that I'd like you to look at, complimenting the City of Pine Love. Complimenting the trash being picked up, but guess who was picking up the trash? Terrence Mishner's daughter, as a volunteer. We're, we're dropping the bomb. We fix that park, we make that park money again. There is a, a solid boys program. We fix that park, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. No, 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 go ahead. We fix that park, we take pitching mounds out. Okay, portable pitching mounds, we buy them for two hundred and fifty dollars a piece. You put boys on them, Bob's feet. It's not just for girls, we put boys on the ball. It's the same thing, it's a money maker, but it's gonna take time. It can't be done tomorrow. But I've gotta have the sport to have it done. Thank you for your time.
Sir, sir, do you have my support? City Council, what I can do for you, I don't know.
Sir?
All the men, you have my support, whatever I can do for you, whatever you need to do.
Okay, so, since, 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 since you give me two more minutes, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm not a kid or anybody of any kind. A money making, you say it's a money making thing, and you say, well, you're going only, uh, mint these fields for five hundred dollars? Okay, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece? There was a thousand people out there, I'm talking to three different concession stand operators that said that concession stand, after paying people and paying their product, uh, product, uh, their, you know, their food costs, should have made twenty-three, thirty-five hundred, five thousand dollars. And I don't know what was that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Is Mr. Clarence Jones here? I guess this Jones, you, I, I don't know. Uh, Mr. Damian White?
Yeah. Well, I'm here with me and my wife, and I just want to really, really reiterate our opposition on the, uh, opium, uh, treatments that are being brought on, uh, seven hundred block of, uh, Secretary. Uh, I'll let my wife kind of elaborate a little bit more on it.
Talk to the wife. Hi, I'm Tika White, and as you said before, we just want to reiterate that, you know, we're, we're not against people getting killed. I just want to make it clear, just, everybody needs somebody, and people, there are people that need help. But the issue is, we just found out, um, about the situation, and I just found it kind of like a, a bully tactic, because when the mining company was trying to come here, the church came and spoke to them. But now that they're wanting to do this, nobody has been to our home, so, and they hadn't talked to us about anything, so I felt like this was a bully tactic. We have small children, uh, on Sunday, uh, at the church, everyone used to my house. So, there's children out there playing. Matter of fact, just, um, last weekend, my daughters and I were able to pull our bikes out to ride around in the neighborhood. And so, there was a sign there, but it had just for sale. Then they went back and broke what you had on, so it wasn't there at first. Cause we rode them sideways, it said for sale. And so, it was added, all there after the fact, and so that's why my husband showed me the picture, I was like, wait a minute, we just rode bikes by there, I didn't see that, it said for sale. And so, they came and altered it. But it was real smart, you see I picked these last year, so I didn't, riding down the road, I didn't see that. So, I just felt like they come and talk to us about everything else. That they could have came and talked to us about that, so I felt like that it was a bully tactic to come and put that in that neighborhood. And, you know, uh, my husband and I both have read articles, uh, about different things, but that place, the neighborhood, is you're not only dealing with a person that has a addiction with drugs, but that brings, most times, when people are addicted to drugs, they have mental issues. And my husband will tell you, he's in a house with three women, our children, myself, and our children. And he barely can hold on to us, so you tell my two security guys, a hun- a hundred people, we give him a hand, it's just three women in the house. So, you know, that, I, 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 I just, I don't like the way it was done. Of course, I did not go in my backyard, because, like I said, we ride bikes in the neighborhood, and when my family come over on Sundays, everybody comfortable, we're outside, uh, children are playing, um, and I, we're doing remodeling on our home, that's gonna bring our property value down. Uh, I've done studies, uh, cause I am a researcher. I've got studies inside where, they did a study in central Virginia on aid rehab facility, or opium rehab facility, how the property value dropped from eight to seventeen percent around that year. And so, we're just starting remodeling, re remodeling, because we're trying to keep up with the remodeling of downtown. Because you can stand in our yard and see downtown. So, if we're trying to build downtown, why would we want a facility like that? That's a hundred people, if, if, an estimate of a hundred people in your neighborhood, and if you just breed up on it, if you breed up on it, everybody don't make it through the twelve steps. And then when they want to quit, they can just leave and roam the neighborhoods, and we have small children in our family. And, like I said, we, we, I, I don't like the way it was done, I'm not against the people getting help, but I don't want it in my backyard. I, I, I do not want it in my backyard. And at least, they should have given us the courtesy to ask, because when their mom said they wanted to come to the Pine Love Mercy, they came to the house. But when they wanted to do this, they did not come and say anything. I don't go anywhere and work in church.
And you should have had an opportunity to go to the commission meeting to speak your piece there as well. They should have definitely come to you, so you could have attended to me.
When we found out our daughter competed in Denver for the rehab gymnasium championship, we were getting ready to get on the plane.
And when I saw them, you got to take it.
Alright. Yeah, but you didn't have any advance notice?
No advance notice.
So, so how big, they even put little notices, so how big was the notice they put out?
I don't know your phone, just put out.
If you see how they, I paid an extra couple hundred dollars to get these glasses, I can't even see y'all, so you know I didn't see the sign.
They put the little signs out.
Right, the sign was so small, but I'm, I'm telling you, when we rode bikes by there over a week ago, it had for sale. Then they came back and broke that on you. You could tell how it was accurate.
No, you have, you have my su- no, 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 you have my support, you gotta listen to these citizens. I do. From a full turn off, you gotta listen to the citizens, no matter what board you live, you ought to try it. Whatever I can do to help you out, you let me know.
And we appreciate, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here, team, and speak, but there is a kitchen handy as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for coming to the city.